We call the meeting to order with Pledge of Allegiance?
The Pledge of Allegiance to apply to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, invincible of liberty and justice for all.
First leg start with an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there any? Buddy? Okay, we have none. Move forward. Approval of agenda. Approved as read. Consent agenda items. Approval of the minutes. Approval of travel and education requests and approval of the human service report. Look for a motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Routine business. Approval of claims.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? Call the roll, please.
Miller, Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on. Department head reports. Mike, you want to start?
Thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
I'm happy to report that our office has been kind of going along fairly smoothly. Irene has been doing a lot of collection works and sending out a lot of notices. We've had a we've had a lot of veterans stopping in to see us, but not necessarily doing a lot more, just kind of having general questions. We had forty-two in the last two weeks, so that's been up more than than normal. The welfare side though has been down a little bit. We had twenty-five. We still getting about same number of calls with a hundred and twenty coming in, or a hundred and twenty-one, and we made about a hundred and five going out, so I guess right now we're we're sitting pretty well and I think we're going along pretty good.
Any questions from the board? Thank you. Richard?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Hill is in Sioux Falls at meetings, training for today, Monday, Wednesday, and Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. You should have received an invitation from Kodiak Pork for an open house today. We just received this on Friday, so out that a swine caifla that was printed back in April and they're ready to start filling it. So that is today from ten until three if you're able to attend that. We have our zoning meeting tonight and I'm continuing to process and work progress on our ordinances, so all that I have. Any questions or anything?
Do you have any updates on the search or brush or?
It's continue as weather permits as for now. We had, they had planned to go out on Monday, but yesterday with the wind and whatnot, so I would presume towards the end of the week, you know, weather permitting and whatnot, so that's the last I've heard, so.
Right.
Is the eyes off?
In places, in places, so.
Alright, thank you.
Also with that, we do have that one be it noted item that was in your packet. Authorizing Chairperson Jensen to sign the letter with the FEMA pre-disaster mitigation planning process participant letter that was included in your packet. What's that?
Is that the one that Bob?
No, we just needed a letter. Bob needed that sign, needed your signature on it, so.
Okay. Chris?
Good morning.
Good morning.
All's going well in our office. We're gonna be, we're gearing up for boards. March sixteenth is the last day to appeal to the local boards and written notice. Stacy emailed me yesterday and I was out, so we'd like to get those dates set up today for the county board. The codified law says that the County Board of Equalization shall be, shall meet annually on the second Tuesday in April, which is April eleventh. So not May, but shall meet. So I think April eleventh, if you can organize your quorum.
That is a non-commission Tuesday, so this would be an additional meeting.
Good news is, right now, I have not heard of one formal appeal countywide. I have nothing on the docket. We've got about, probably about ten corrections that we're, we're doing as a DOE recommendation. A couple of those are, we sent out the assessment notices, they've looked at them, said, hey, why did we go up? They came in after discussion, they meet the AG criteria. So we're changing their classification to AG under the new law, that, which they wouldn't have met in the past. Couple of other issues, we had some buildings that were destroyed after the assessment notices were out. And they were either December or early January, rather than going through the abatement process next year, we'll just take them off of the books now. Minor stuff, one value difference that we had a misclassification. And that'll be going to the township local board for them to act on, on our recommendation. We've gone through everything, so as of right now, we have no formal appeals that I know of in Brookings City, any of the townships, so if we don't have any at local board, I don't anticipate we should have any at county board. Possibly one, maybe two that, that live out of state that can directly appeal to you folks, but I haven't heard of anything yet. So again, April fourth is the last day for them to file written notice of appeal for the county boards and the board has to meet on April eleventh. And then not to remain in session longer than three weeks. As needed. And we'll also be going out here what is today, seventh? Thursday, Thursday, we've got the township board meeting out at the Swiftell Center. I'm sure you're all aware of that. We'll be presenting a little bit earlier this year to accommodate the, the weed board coming out, so.
So on the eleventh, does that work for everyone and if so, what time would you like to meet? Would you like to treat it as a regular meeting and do eight-thirty? Does it not work for someone?
We will have a lot of things for you to act on, all of our exemptions. Discretionary formulas, elderly freezes, disabled vets. A lot of owner occupied classifications that weren't owner occupied until they got their assessment notice. Now they've made application and it's just one mass, mass motion for all of those, but I do have two exempt properties that I'm gonna bring to the board separate. They're religious exemptions that I am not recommending for exempt. It's churches that own additional land. That, that isn't part of the parcel. They didn't want to combine it into one parcel, so I could say this lot one, two, and three is one parcel. Now they've got lot one and two together, but lot three is separate, and the law states that it has to be a structure and/or parking utilized exclusively for religious purposes. These are not. One of the churches already had another lot that never was, or always was taxed. And after going through them, I discovered they have a second lot, and I've been in contact with all of them. I had about fifteen. I'm down to two that, and I've sent them assessment notices valuing, so they've been notified. But I do have an application, so we'll have to make motions on those if you wanted to approve or not approve, but but we'll have all of that for you. So there's a lot of things to, to approve and make motions on, but everything is pretty, pretty standard.
I think we should just do it at eight-thirty and keep, keep in with what we've done.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
And marking off until noon should just be satisfactory for that, right?
Yeah. It won't take that long.
Morning. To kind of give you an idea what we've been doing, we've been working on the annual report that was due March first, and we will be bringing that to the commission at the next meeting. We just have to do it sometime in March, and it will be published in the paper too, in March, so you will be receiving that. It just didn't get done in time for this meeting. And we've been having a lot of township questions because it's a township annual meeting today, so we've been working with the townships answering their questions and getting them ready for their meeting today. And the surplus sale, I think, is going good. There's been people here to look at different things, the vehicles, the planks, different things like that, so Jenna has been working with the highway department and who's ever in charge of the specific item and getting the people to see the items they're looking at, so that closes on Thursday. Is that correct, Jenna? So we will have probably a report next time on how everything went, but that has been going good. And otherwise, just business as usual. Any questions? Thanks.
Thank you. Marty?
Morning.
Morning.
If you're outside yesterday afternoon, you probably smelled the smell that got the county in a kind of a including myself, walking out, and I thought, I thought a sewer smell was coming from the correction, you know, from the detention center. I think every business that went outside, I thought it was coming from their business. Fire department was busy going to a couple places. Navita called in, and I haven't confirmed if they had a, if they had a gas leak or if it was the smell coming. I've heard, they're trying to blame about everybody for the smell, but I don't know exactly what the origin of the smell came from, but it sure made a stir. Anyway, just quickly, I had a deputy that didn't get a travel request in to me, Sean Deremas, and this is the second half of what, he's going to a specialized DRE school to detect drugged driving. We're seeing an increase of those types of arrests, so that's, he's gonna become a DRE individual that will if the city police or my office or the highway patrol has one guy that's trained. I think the city police may have one person that's trained, but if they believe the person is under the influence of drugs, he's called in and he has some specialized training for that. And what's nice about this, the state picks up the tab, so he had to spend a couple of weeks in Aberdeen, and now he spends a week in Arizona, and he was, he left the fifth and will be back the ninth, but the state does pick up the tab on that, so it doesn't come out of our, our budget. The other thing is, is, as I hand it out, we've got a relief at the jail. As you see that we have thirty-one inmates right now, which is kind of a relief for us, because the first sixty days of this year, our average was forty-seven point eight inmates, so that's, that's kind of nice to have that, that, that relief. March first, I met with the state's attorney and university police chief, the Brookings Police Chief, and the university's attorney. And we're just, we're gonna start meeting more often and try to open up a little bit of, a little more communications between the agency, the agencies and so forth. Brookings Police and myself and Highway Patrol, we probably converse quite a bit, but we don't always converse with the officials at, at the university, so we're trying to kind of, state's attorney's office is trying to help us bring that communications, and so we have open communication, because we all need to work together and so forth, so I think that meeting went well. Went to the council meeting in Vaga last night to present our jail expansion to them, just to, just so that they're informed. And that way, if they have any residents that ask them questions and so forth, and, and that went real well. Also, I've been asked to be on the My Neighbor Board, and so I'm gonna join that board. Again, My Neighbor is, is an organization that helps individuals that are having struggles in the community and so forth. Then, just finally, the sheriff's office is teaming up with Basin Electric, and they have a, Basin Electric has through their companies have what they call Brave the Shave, and what it is, it's they, they form teams to, and, and the teams try to collect money, donations, sell raffle tickets, so forth, so it goes to cancer research, then it goes to a family in, in the Brookings area that has someone that's suffering from cancer. And that'll end on March twentieth at the Brookings Fire Department, and there'll be about five or six of us gonna shave our heads that day, I guess, so I gotta let my hair grow out a little bit. My, my wife says it's getting too long the way it was, I had to cut it, so I hope it gets a little longer. We have a couple, Pam Eriksen, I don't know if you know Pam, she's a longtime member at the police department and so forth, and she has real, she's gonna donate eight inches of her hair. And I have a correctional officer is gonna donate eight inches of her hair too, to, so it's, it's a good cause and it's kind of fun, so if you want to donate to the sheriff's posse, we'll welcome your checks, or if you want to buy a raffle ticket for ten dollars for some prizes, so. Other than that, that's all I have.
Unless somebody would want to participate?
What's that?
If anybody else would want to participate with you, or?
Yeah, that's absolutely. The team is open. I'll, I'll put any, any members on, so if you want a free haircut, on the twentieth, I got barbers coming to give us a haircut, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Marty. Richard?
Good morning. Last week, we had our annual M Shaw Refresher Training, which is quite involved. It's at the, was held at the East Fire Hall. We split our crew up and go half one day and half another. It's eight hours. Then also, since we have our crack machine temporarily down, we completed the drug and alcohol awareness training and also the workplace harassment training that HR is wanting completed by the twenty-first, so it kind of worked out good to get all our safety and stuff out of the way. Thursday is that annual township meeting at the Swiftell, so I'll be attending that. And then also last week, we put our seasonal weight restrictions into effect last Friday, and they will be on till road conditions can tolerate legal loads. And other than that, we don't have anything but business but usual, and if you have any questions.
Morning. Thank you.
Thanks.
Moving on to regular business, I guess. Action to automatically supplement for unanticipated expense incurred in reimbursement made to the Brookings County Sheriff's Department in the amount of five hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty cents. Receipt number zero zero three five nine nine two one to line one zero one dash four dash two one one dash four two five zero for accident damage reimbursement.
Move approval.
Anything on this, Marty? Okay. Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B. Action approve abatement number seventeen dash zero zero eight. An abatement application made by the city of Brookings for parcel number four zero five seven five dash zero zero one zero zero dash zero zero two dash one zero in the amount of one hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Look for motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion second, is this?
This is just an abatement. The city owned property and they're tax exempt, so it's already passed the city, so it's just gotta go through the county boards.
Okay. Call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C. Action approve agreement number seventeen dash zero seven, a delinquent tax payment agreement in the amount of four thousand three hundred and seventy-one dollars and forty-four cents. Look for motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Dick, you got background here?
This is one that we were, I sent out a letter, we were gonna start proceedings to take tax deed to this property. And they came in and paid twenty-three hundred dollars, which paid two years, and we have the rest set up on payments to be done by the end of this year, so then we'll be back on track, so I recommend approval.
Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D. Action approve agreement number seventeen dash zero eight. An app, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy.
Move approval.
Got a motion in the second. Any questions? Call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter E. Action approve agreement number seventeen dash zero nine, an application for occupancy of right-of-way of county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy. Look for motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion second? Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Action approve resolution number seventeen dash zero seven, a resolution authorizing the purchase of one two thousand seventeen tandem axle semi tractor based upon the price established through Brookings County Highway Bid Process.
I did set a new copy of the resolution in front of you this morning. There were some changes that needed to be made specifically to the codified law that was noted in the third whereas, so the corrected version is, was laid out in front of you this morning. Move approval, that was corrected.
Second.
Dick, do you have any background here, or? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter G. Action approve the letting authorization for project number BRF six zero three zero parentheses zero zero sixteen dash five PCN zero five QR bridge number zero six one four three oh eight zero. Look for motion.
Second.
Yeah, motion in the second. Dick, get the background here.
This is our bridge rehabilitation project that we received the grant for. And so this is just the state's form that acknowledges that we're ready to let them go to bed or give them permission to go to bed on that.
Okay, where is this located?
It's the one right on Highway six, about a mile and a half east of Highway seven.
Okay, any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I do have a question, but it didn't affect my vote, but what exactly are we gonna be doing on the rehabilitation?
They will, first of all, clean out all the voids in the deck, and then they'll put a low slump overlay on it, and then they'll put an epoxy seal over the top, so it's, it's gonna reestablish almost like a new bridge deck. This is also the one that got delayed because in the beginning of the grant program, they hadn't really given the guidelines of what would be acceptable for rehabilitation projects, and so after the DOT had ironed out some of their concerns and what would be acceptable projects, since we were awarded, they just gave us a guideline, so now it's all ready to go to bid, so it should get done this summer, hopefully.
Letter, letter H. Annual Highway Bid Recommendations. Documents. Number one, under letter H, action award bid number one for rubberized crack filling material to low bid on all items listed from Brockway Construction Material, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Midstates Equipment, Mountain Lake, Minnesota.
Second.
Got a motion in the second? We call the roll.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number two, action award bid number two for road oil to low bid from MC bid item MC three thousand listed from Flint Hills, Marshall, Minnesota, and low bid item MC eight hundred listed from Jebro Incorporated, Sioux City, Iowa. Look for motion.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion in the second, call the roll.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number three, action award bid number three for P Rock to low bid on all items listed from LG Everest, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, and Johnson Brothers Madison, South Dakota.
Move approval. Second.
Got a motion in the second, any questions? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number four, action award bid number four for three-quarter crush gravel to low bid on all items listed from Bowes Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, Sturzinger Crushing Taunton, Minnesota, and Sturzinger Construction Oakton, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, any questions? Call the roll.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number five, action award bid number five for screen gravel to low bid on all items listed from Bowes Construction, Brookings, South Dakota, and Johnson Brothers Madison, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Got a motion in the second? Call the roll, please.
Miller.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number six, action award bid number six for equipment rentals to low bid on all items listed from VJ Allers, Brookings, South Dakota, Bowes Construction Incorporated, Brookings, South Dakota, Butler Machinery, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, Ziegler Cat, Marshall, Minnesota, Prusman Contracting Incorporated, Brookings, South Dakota, and RDO Equipment Company, Sioux Falls, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion in the second, call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Pierce.
Aye.
Miller.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Number seven, action award bid number seven for HR class asphalt to low bid on all items listed from Bowes Construction, Brookings, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion is second? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Action award bid number eight for bituminous hot mix to low bid on all items listed from Bowles Construction, Brookings, South Dakota.
Move. Second.
Got a motion is second? Call the roll, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Letter I. Annual Purchase Agreements for Annual Highway Bids. Number one. Action approve agreement number 17-10. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Brock White Construction Materials Sioux Falls, South Dakota for rubberized crack filling material.
Move approval.
Got a motion is second? Call the roll, please.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number two. Action approve agreement number 17-11. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Midstates Equipment and Supply of Mountain Lake, Minnesota for rubberized crack filling material.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion is second? Any questions? Call the roll, please.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number three. Action approve agreement number 17-2. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Flint Hills of Marshall, Minnesota for MC 3000 road oil.
Move approval.
Second.
It was 1712.
17-12. Call the roll, please.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
And four. Action approve agreement number 17-13. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Jebro Incorporated of Sioux City, Iowa for MC 800 road oil.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion is second? Call the roll, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number five. Action approve agreement number 17-14. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bowles Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for screen gravel, three-quarter crush gravel and HR class asphalt. Look for motion.
Second.
Got a motion is second? We call the roll.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number six. Action approve agreement number 17-15. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Johnson Brothers Incorporated of Madison, South Dakota for P-Rock and screen gravel.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion is second? We call the roll.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number seven. Action approve agreement 17-16. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and LG Everest of Sioux Falls, South Dakota for P-Rock. For motion.
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion is second? Call the roll.
Pierce.
Hi.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Number eight. Action approve agreement number 17-17. A purchase agreement between Brookings County and Bowles Construction of Brookings, South Dakota for bituminous hot mix.
Move.
Second.
Got a motion is second? Dick, can you? All our annual bids, how, how are they compared to last year's?
Significantly lower. Well, last year, of course, last year we did some milling in there, so that looked a little different, but just in blacktop alone, last year it was like $71 per ton, now it's $59.11. And with the patching, I think that was, boy, it was, it was quite high, and it's just under $70 a ton this year. Last year, I think it was like 81 or 83, something like that.
So road oil was probably cheaper, too?
Yes, considerably.
Okay, Jenna, call the roll, please.
Miller.
Hi.
Krogman.
Hi.
Bartley.
Hi.
Pierce.
Hi.
Johnson.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Letter J. Discussion on proceeding with the jail expansion project.
Mr. Chair, could I ask one question?
Sure.
As a follow-up to the question that you had. Dick, so when you, did you have a chance to add that up and see how, what the impact on the budget is if we're lower than what you had planned on these items?
It should, it should not be lower, it should be about the same because with the per-unit price being lower, we'll be able to do the full length of the project. So it, it will probably come in lower, but not significantly lower.
Okay, thank you.
Back to letter J. I guess we're, discussion on proceeding with jail expansion project. There's some discussion on how we wanted to kind of set up a timeframe. If anybody has any suggestions, or?
Did we get a final count on how many people attended the open house? At all? Anybody keep track? How many took the tour, or how many people showed up?
When I counted.
Alright, so if we subtract us out of it, maybe 10, 12 people who weren't directly involved? I consider us as directly involved with the project. You take all the people directly involved with the expansion project, how many people were from the citizens that showed up? We have 10 to 12 then, if you take, or was your 30 excluding, excluding all of us?
No, that, it's probably including you guys.
Yeah, well, okay. I, to me, that's, that's not enough for us to judge whether the public support is there, so I think we talked about last week having an additional meeting here for testimony, and I think that's still appropriate. So how we, we go ahead is up to us, but I think the sooner the better if we're going to, we've already started, so let's keep moving as far as the public input is concerned, and try and schedule something as quickly as we can before our, our commission.
On your public input, what are you suggesting? Do you, are you thinking that BKV should come back, or is this just in front of us? What, what are your thoughts along those lines?
Well, I think the majority of it's probably just in front of us since we've already had the presentation. Now, there may be some questions of changes made to the exterior part of the building or other layout of the building as it relates to their services. I think our decision is moving forward or not, and I think that's, that's the decision that we want public input on. The rest of it will come down the road again later as they come back. Once we've approved it, then they'll spend, we'll spend money and they'll spend time to develop those exterior design features that were requested by the people who did show up for the open house, so. I think our first decision is move forward or not move forward, and I think we need just one more public input meeting at least to find out where the support is in the community because we will be talking about the possibility of a bond issue and the impact of that, so I think that's our discussion is the bond issue and whether we move forward. As far as exterior design, that happens if we move forward.
Do you think we should have the discussion prior to our vote on moving forward, or?
Well, discussion of possible action could also be at the same meeting.
Okay. That's what we were.
And we would draft a resolution approving the project. Is that how you foresee this moving forward? I think there's two resolutions. A resolution approving the project itself, and then if the board chooses to issue, do bond issue, that would be a resolution as well.
Also, I see it as, as a public notice for an action item to proceed or not to proceed with the expansion project, and, and again, the resolution for bonding is another issue, but you know, promote it as an open house for people to come and, and give us their opinions. And then we've got a really good feeling at that point. I mean, all of us have opinions coming from our circle of people who advise us, but I'd like others to have the opportunity to come and speak to us too publicly, so. If we could schedule that shortly, I think that'd be better. The sooner the better, since we just had the open house to keep it fresh in everybody's mind.
So are you thinking a, a special meeting, obviously? Are you thinking an evening meeting, or what are your thoughts along those lines?
I guess we'd have probably better attendance if we had an evening meeting and that was the only subject in possible action, which we could notice and do, I suppose.
Mike, if, if you want to notice it as a public hearing, there are going to be publication requirements that'll push it out probably, you know, it's too late to get anything in the papers. I mean, the earliest you would be looking at is the last week in March to meet my public, to meet the publication requirements of a noticed public hearing.
I, I think that's appropriate. I don't have an issue with that time, right?
The other option is to do it at the 21st, but that would be during the day, so that's.
And that doesn't give enough time for publication to be met on the 21st.
Oh, okay.
Well, those are just my thoughts. I'll listen to others.
No, we need, we do need some input, I mean, that's, I understand where you're coming from, just a time. We want, that's what we're doing today, is just setting up a timeframe so we can get move forward.
So is everybody thinking that what we would do is a public hearing with possible action that night to vote on whether or not we hire our architect? Is that?
Whether or not we move forward with the project.
Okay.
Got a consensus?
Now we need to set a date, so I know what you're thinking.
What's the earliest? For publication purposes?
Let's see. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, any, anytime the week of the 27th.
I will be gone during that time, but that's fine, you can still have it.
Nice.
Sorry, I didn't.
Or, I mean, or you could wait till, you know, the, the fourth and do it as part of your commission, I want to do an evening thing, I, but it doesn't necessarily have to be that week either, but.
What, what?
Monday, the third?
Does the city commission meet, is that on? Well, that Tuesday would be city planning, first Tuesday of the month. I guess the other thought is we could have our meeting on the fourth, and then basically adjourn to an evening time for the hearing and.
Does the city council meet Tuesday evening, the fourth?
Are you talking April 4th? City planning and zoning in this room at 5:30, and then county planning and zoning is in here at 8 o'clock. We, maybe that could be moved, but that's what, I think we have a big meet, Richard's gone. I think we have a, a big meeting on the fourth unless it gets tabled.
I think we have to have it on a different, I, I think maybe Monday night is a better option, the third.
Third.
To avoid activities in this room.
Yeah, I don't have a problem, I'm available the third very easily.
That work?
What time?
Seven.
And you're, and, and at that one, you want the resolution to proceed with the project? Is that the motion that you foresee taking that evening?
I wonder if, if that's the right way to do that, then. If we're gonna have a public hearing on Monday night at 7 o'clock, maybe our action, we should just put on our regular agenda, so we've got some time to think about what happened at the meeting. And do it at 8:30 the next morning when we have our regular meeting.
I don't think it makes much difference, I think that'll work fine.
I don't think it looks good to have a resolution ready to go and then have a meeting and vote on something without pondering it, my opinion.
Even on Tuesday, you can have it as possible action, we can always, if we're needing more information after the public hearing, we can always put it off to the next meeting, too, to get the extra information we need.
So discussion impossible action on that resolution on the fourth?
Yeah, I think you need to have it as, as discussion impossible action.
Okay.
If there's any questions, or we are meeting on the 11th again, too, so.
And so then on the fourth, would we address the bond issue also?
Yes.
So we'd have two resolutions on the fourth.
Okay, on the fourth, we will, on Monday night, the third, I guess we will have a meeting at 7 o'clock, and opponents, proponents, whatever, we'll have discussion. And Tuesday will be on the regular commission meeting, we'll be looking at it.
Just as, while we're on this topic as well, in front of you this morning, Commissioner Johnson had asked me to reach out to Mr. Grimmon again with Doherty to get information on a different bond amount, closer to that 5.5 million. That information is in front of you that I set out this morning, and on the very back page, he, he didn't provide the breakdown of the cost per thousand like he had for the first two options, so I, I did that myself yesterday, put it into a spreadsheet, so keep in mind, these are estimates because this is my spreadsheet, but but that is, that was in front of you this morning, so.
So on the third, at 7 o'clock, would the architect be there then again, or what are we planning for what we're going to do at that meeting?
No, it's gonna be a public meeting where opponents and proponents can talk.
Like Mike said, if there's issues with design or, lady, that comes later on in the project.
So when we say proponents, who will present the information to everybody there on the detention center project?
Well, we can have the sheriff's office.
Well, I think the committee also.
Or the committee, yeah, either one.
I think both should make the presentation. I mean, you make the presentation, they're available to answer most of the questions that would be asked, I think. Yeah, it'll be clean that way. My question on the resolution for the bonding. Would we be using these as our final numbers, or are these subject to change?
Well, it depends on how much we decide to bond. Well, it depends on how much we decide to bond.
Right, yes.
So it's still subject to what we decide?
Reason I asked for this, I thought, you know, we're moving forward. It'd be a year down the road if we thought we wouldn't have to bond as much. So I had Stacy call and get the different numbers for us, so...
All right, and then the bonding issue is referable? It's not required that we vote, it's referable? Okay, just want to make that clear, that the public understands that it's a referable issue and not re... Not an automatic vote.
Will we find with that?
I hope we have a better turnout than we did the other night.
Yep.
Township meeting on Thursday, does that affect rural, the farmers differently on, on... So it basically still is at eight cents per thousand dollars?
Eighteen. Eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen per, for the 7.3.
Okay.
It's eighteen cents.
And then, I know the handout that you have, I, I asked that question. I guess on their valuations, they can plug it into what their land value is. You know, because their buildings are exempt from that. So... Whatever your land value had, it would be, fit into that, uh,
Okay.
chart that's on there.
Okay.
Probably be nice to have some out there Thursday.
Yeah, I'm thinking for that meeting, we want to be pretty well versed in the, the cost analysis, because I think that's going to be the issue that defines this, this project is at what cost, what benefits, so we need to be well aware of questions in that regard and how we can answer them.
And I'll refer that back to you guys.
Thank you very much.
Well, there's still that benefits part. There's still the benefits part that you're going to be actively involved with. We have to deal with the cost part, but you have to help us with the benefit part.
And I guess I hope Marty, at the meeting, you were going to probably talk about it at the township meeting, weren't you? Okay. Right.
The other thought that I have is, do we need to do more than just the official notice of the meeting? Do we need to promote this?
It will, it will be noticed, a public hearing requires separate notice.
I understand that, but in addition to what's required, do we want to have additional notice of some sort? Either Larry talking with Perry on the radio, or somebody doing an interview with the paper to, to talk about what the meeting's about, so people get an understanding, uh, to show up for it. I guess my concern is that a lot of people don't really understand the process, and probably don't want to show up because they don't understand the process, so uh, if we have something public relations wise that goes out there, I mean, we did about this building too, when it happened. Uh, we had several different entities that, that were approached by both the paper and interviews and the radio station interviews as to, to get some more information out about it, so I don't know what's the proper etiquette here, if it's, if it's, uh, the chairman talks about this, or if we do, or the sheriff does, or...
And I, I don't think, I don't think it would hurt, I know we, we're going to publish the notice in our regular legal newspapers, but I don't think it would hurt to put something in the shopper. Wouldn't cost us that much, and, and we might reach more people that way that are actually looking at it. And not, not our public notice, but maybe a little ad, you know, just saying what's going on and that would reach more people. I did notice that the meeting last week was not on our channel, on the TV, on our website.
It had been, that was a, a timing issue, when you say the event is on, you know, say it's on March 7th.
Uh-huh.
The TV, uh, the way it's set up, it took it off at 12:00 AM the day of, so it had been up there until the day of, and that was a, a timing issue that we've figured out. So it had been on there up until that, the day of, unfortunately, but we've got that figured out now, so... To actually tell it to end the day after the event.
Maybe the chair of the committee could probably do that too. Being here as chair of the committee, I am chair of the commission, but...
I think this is a, a project worthy of going above and beyond what our normal notice procedure is to the public, because we didn't see the response I expected at the open house, to be honest with you. Some of it might have been our fault that we, our notice wasn't much in the paper, it was pretty small, and you'd had to really want to read it to read it. And, uh, so I, I just think if we can do a little better job, it'll help us in the long run with the public. So another question, do we send out any emails to the other mayors and the commi, and the county? Notice so they can bring it up at their meetings, do we, uh, you know, we'll bring it up obviously at the township meeting, because Marty's already said they're asking questions, so are there other areas where we could be proactive in, in getting the word out of a hearing?
Marty, do you have, when you have correspondence with the smaller communities on your contract laws, have you brought up the jail expansion?
Yes, my suggestion is that we talk to all the mayors if we can, and they can relay the message through social media if nothing else seems to be the contact, we, we don't have a Facebook site, do we?
I can email the notice out to, like, the city, the city finance officers or the city administrators of each of the small cities throughout the, the county. And that they, and ask them to share that with their mayor and council members.
I think the more notice we can get out that way through, uh, social media too, might help us with that. Well, do what we can do, and then a little bit more, and nobody can say we didn't try.
Yep. Okay, moving on to number nine, commission department director report.
With my report, the most recent legislative, SDACC legislative update was included with my report. We did receive notice that the, the chambers annual meeting is next Wednesday evening, it's the same time that, um, three of you will be at Spring Workshop out in Pier. The county does receive two tickets to that event as part of our membership. Leanne indicated that she would take one because she plans to attend because she's not going to be out in Pier.
I'll take one.
You'll take one, okay. And if that's agreeable, we'll let the chamber know that you two will be the ones that will use that. The Register approached me again about their Momentum magazine that comes out, uh, this, uh, end of April, this spring. Last year, the article was in, included with my report, that we did a two-page article on the county that just came, gave a, kind of a story about the county, and then a little brief synopsis of each department with the department head photos. They reached out again wondering if that is something that we would like to participate in again this year. You know, that was when I was out last year about that time, so I didn't get any feedback from it, I don't know if any of you received any feedback from that article in that magazine, if it was good, I mean, we can, we can use that opportunity to, you know, talk about anything we want to talk about. We don't have to, you know, the, kind of the first year we did it, we just kind of gave a, an overview of the county, so...
Is that a monthly?
No, it's a one-time, it's a one-time issue. Just a magazine that they do, one-time publication that they do in the spring each year.
I, I think that this would be a great opportunity to talk about some of the things that we have going, i.e. the jail expansion, um, what we're trying to do with roads and bridges and, um, what's going on in the county.
The cost is, for the two-page spread like you, like we did last year, it's, um, approximately about $800, so... And the cost goes down from there.
Ryan?
I, I liked it, I thought it was good. I thought it was informative, I thought it was well done. So, um, I don't have a problem at all. I thought it was, the money was worth it, so...
Okay.
I liked that idea of us getting out there, I've always talked about that, of, of our county employees being able to, you know, be in articles and talk on the radio and all that kind of stuff, so... I think it's well worth the money, and I'd encourage you to do it again.
I would concur.
Okay, we will work in that direction then. I think Dick had mentioned it during his report, we do have employees right now participating in online training, uh, harassment prevention and maintain, and maintaining a drug-free workplace. Now, as you as elected officials, we can't mandate that you take those courses, but if you would like to participate in those, they're online training sessions, and we've found that with, with employees, it's, it works all good with employee schedules, because they can take those, they can stop, you know, if they get busy doing something else, they can stop in the middle and come back to them, but Laura can track that, it prints off a certificate when you've finished, and you turn that in, and she get, puts those in the personnel files, so she's able to track who has, who has taken it and who still needs to, and it's a, a service through, free service through SDP AAR, um, or pool. So if that's something you're interested in, let me know, I can get you the links to that information. Or if you need a computer space to come, there's always computers open up at the office, or downstairs too, so... Spring Workshop is next week, uh, the 15th and 16th, it does, uh, start at, the first, the first session is at 8:30 Wednesday morning, so I do have the traverse reserved for any, for tho, for us to go out. I guess I'm, I've also got hotel rooms for both nights, Tuesday night and Wednesday night, so I need to know who's planning on going out Tuesday night. And if you want to coordinate, you're going to go out, both, go out? Okay?
I'm going Tuesday.
Okay, you're all go, the three of you are, so are any of you going to travel together and take the traverse? Going to coordinate that now? Okay, so might, you're going to be leaving a little early from, because it wraps up about 3 o'clock or so on Thursday. Well, you guys can think about it too, and just let me know what you want to do, and I can figure that out.
You're leaving Tuesday?
I am going to leave Tuesday as well, yes.
What time are you thinking?
Um, I was thinking probably early afternoon, 1, 2, depending on what was going on at the office.
I was going to leave later in the day.
Yeah, just...
Yeah. That'd be, I could ride out with... That'd work. Sounds good.
Okay, we'll figure it out.
Yep.
Okay. The redesign of the website is coming along nicely, uh, Michelle and I got our first peek at the new layout, just a, a PDF of the layout, nothing interactive at this point, but, um, some of the main goals, I think probably the most important thing is to make it more smartphone and tablet friendly. We're discovering as we, we get our statistics, that most people are looking at things on their smartphones or on tablets, so we want it to be, um, user-friendly with those types of devices, simpler to navigate, and, uh, just a, just a more modern layout, and what we saw, we both liked, so um, we're making some, still some revisions that should be done by the middle of this month, and um, the goal is to go live with the changes by the end of May, so I'll kind of keep you posted as we move forward on that.
Will we get a chance to have any, a review of that before we have a final go-live?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll get a chance to say, wow, or this is a problem?
Yes, we, we... Um, yeah, well, we're making revisions now, I'll visit with Michelle and see what, you know, what our, kind of our drop-dead date is on finals, but, uh, but it's, it's hard when you get too many opinions on things too, because everybody likes a little bit different, but yeah, we want you to be comfortable with it, so if there's something really poor, but I, I, you know, from what I've gotten from you is just make it simpler to make things easier to find. It's kind of the main, you know, c- concern that I've heard from the board, so...
And from the ordinance revision perspective, if I'm a county resident and I want to know what size sign I can put up, there's ought to be somewhere where I can put in the word "sign" and the, the information will come up so people can find it. It's just impossible to find our, our ordinance information unless you go through the whole code. And, and that, that I'm hoping we're going to fix as we're...
Okay, I'll ask that about Michelle, about the search function of it.
That was just an example.
Okay. We're still reviewing the employee manual, I've got some things now, Terry and I've gone through it, and so hopefully we'll have something that we can bring back to on March 21st with changes to look at, and, um, I'll probably put it on as discussion and possible action at that point, in, in case there are additional changes that the board would like to see. We talked about an ordinance for the parking lot over at the 1921 building in Fifth Street Gym, I did reach out to, um, Mills Development and the school district. Both of those entities are in favor of putting an ordinance in place so that they have, you know, specifically Mills was, because they do ask now for residents, if they're going to, like, clean the parking lot with snow. They let their residents know ahead of time that this is when they're going to do that, ask them to remove vehicles. When those vehicles don't belong to anybody there, it makes it that much more difficult to get that parking lot, uh, cleaned out. Just things of that nature, so they were in favor of it, and they, they specifically wanted to be kept informed as the process moves forward, and, you know, maybe have some opinions to add to that as, as we go along. The school district wasn't quite as concerned about it, because their events are typically just kind of a one-day-in-and-out type, type thing, they don't have any need for long-term parking at that lot per se, but, um, that being said, they weren't not in favor of doing something and having that ordinance in place as well, so... That's where we are with that, I received, uh, an email yesterday from Heidi at United Way, and she's looking at putting together a meeting with the funding partners um, March 14th, this is the next Tuesday, from 8:30 until noon. So is any, I guess I needed to get back to her if any of you are interested in participating in that meeting, that's the morning before we leave for Pier, and so, um, I told her that I could not, because I need to be in the office working on the agenda for the next week since I'm out uh, Wednesday, Thursday that week, so... Does that work for anybody she's sent this off to? The city and the school district are the ones that I received the email with, so I think they're just trying to get kind of a panel discussion going. Is anyone interested in participating? Okay, no? You can? Okay. All right, Ryan?
Yeah.
The 14th from 8:30 to noon.
You said 14th, right?
Yep. 8:30 until noon. I will let her know that and put, give her your contact information.
Hold on a second.
Be backing out.
Yeah, 8:30 till noon, I was thinking it was at noon.
No, 8:30 till noon.
We got a Central 21 business consultant coming in the office in the morning, so...
Okay. No? Okay. Okay. Let's see, we had our jail open house. The towns, the township annual meeting is Thursday at, starts at 10 o'clock at the Swiftell Center and we have a number of our department heads that will be presenting at that. I think I've already indicated that four of the five of you will be attending. I think I've already RSVP'd for that. So just a reminder that that's then and then the workshop next week. And other than that, that's all I have unless you have any questions of me.
Any questions for Stacy? Terry?
So, um, Leann and Richard and Bob and I have been working on ordinances. It's a work in progress. I believe we have the administrative portion ready for, um, Bob and Richard's reviews. Then we'd be heading on to the next section, um, working on statistics and we're hoping to have those for the 21st. Quite a big increase in what we've looked at from last year already. And, um, I personally have used the wireless, um, paperless system, not totally, in court for the last two Mondays and it's worked pretty smooth. Still kind of clinging to my files, but you know, it's, it's pretty slick. It works, the internet connection that Sean's done is great and so we'll see how it goes going forward when we're totally without files. But it's working really good and it's nice to have all that information on one screen, so. Nothing else to report.
Mr. Pierce?
As Terry said, um, we finished the administrative section of the ordinance, our part of it, and it's ready to move on. On, um, March 3rd, the Lake Subcommittee met for our last meeting and we're done with what we're doing on the Lake Park District and that is now going to go to Terry for review, I believe. And so ordinances are moving along. Governmental Affairs has been pretty busy. There was a forum on, uh, February 25th. The next forum that's coming up will be March 11th and that one is, as relates to the city and school district. The city council forum will be at 9 o'clock, the mayor forum at 10 o'clock and the school district at 11:15 if anybody's interested in that. And then, um, we had a meeting on March 2nd where we got all that set up. And then, uh, I attended the detention center public hearing meeting with the rest of you and that's all I have to report.
Mr. Burley?
Okay. February 20th, I attended the Central Behavioral Health Board Meeting. No significant changes from that meeting. Legislative coffee on the 25th, I was the moderator for that and it actually turned out really well. Went the whole hour and a half exactly. And, uh, a good turnout, we actually filled the place again. I attended the Government Affairs Committee, as Leann mentioned, and also the jail open house on the 2nd. And she mentioned that we do have legislative forum again, candidate forum on, uh, Saturday. I will be moderating the council member portion of the forum and also the school board portion of the forum and, uh, Andy, uh, I can't remember Andy's last name, Forberg or For something, I can't remember. Anyway, Andy from the CSU will be moderating the mayor's forum at 10 o'clock. So, uh, if you have some questions for that, you can submit those to the Chamber Office and they will refer them back out. Up to us to ask the candidates their position on certain issues, so. That's what I have. I'll be attending the, the township meeting on Thursday.
Mr. Krogman?
Yeah, um, met with Representative from Madera Township, uh, on the 22nd of February. His discussion and his, he will be coming to us in front of us here eventually, uh, asking for some help with Western Avenue, where the city, uh, ends there, where the road is at there, where the school is at. They're getting a tremendous amount of traffic and, uh, they're going to be coming to ask for some help with that because of the use of the road so much has increased because of the school there. So, anyway, I met with him and we discussed a little bit about that. Um, and then on March 2nd, I was at the, the public, uh, hearing for the jail expansion.
At 1 o'clock on the 2nd of March, we had our jail expansion committee meeting and at that, we, we discussed our timeline and who would speak at the public meeting that we had. And that evening, we had the public meeting. I was thrilled that so many of the people who were there, although it wasn't that many people, but they did go through the jail. And I'd like to thank the sheriff for doing that, that I think that that was a big help. On the 3rd, I attended a bid opening for chemicals with Misty, our weed department. And on the 6th, Commissioner Cindy Heiburger from Mini Haha invited me to be in on a WebEx for JDAI. And so it was Judge Foley and Molly Ramlow from Court Services and myself. And Judge Foley ended up having a hearing, but it's recorded, so he'll see it. But Molly and I sat together and listened and then we had a lengthy conversation afterwards. And what they want us to do right now is to put together a, a key committee. And they had a list of people that you could use as players in that committee and, um, start discussions on some alternative, um, things that we can do with our juveniles. And in the discuss, in the, uh, core group would be state's attorney, sheriff's office, police department, commission, court services, the, a judge. And they, they would like us to put our committee together and if we want to participate in, in these discussions, they want to know by the 17th of March. So I had to bring it up today before I had a lot more information. But having said that, someone would, would come and present to us if we were interested in hearing more about this and I think we should be interested in hearing more about this. You know, our juvenile costs have, have skyrocketed and, um, I think we should hear more and they're willing to come and talk to the whole commission. And I think it would be good for us all to be on board with this. So if, if you are in agreement with that, I will contact someone and, and make arrangements for them to come and do a, a short presentation to us.
Do you need, what do you need to know by the 17th? Do we need a consensus?
Whether or not we want to participate in this.
So we'll need a consensus today because we don't meet again until the 21st.
Right, right. And, and it, there's training involved, but there are grants. And they more or less said that the early bird will get the worm, meaning that if we say yes today that we would like to participate in, in these discussions and this training, we'll, we might get in on grants to help with that. There's a, there's a statewide training in October. There's a training in Orlando in April and a training in Portland in August. And of course, the statewide one, if we get involved, they want everybody to go to that. But I think that they, there would be money to help send somebody to the Orlando or Portland training, should it work. But anyway, it's my recommendation, after listening to that WebEx, that we get involved.
I'm personally not handling those now. I, I still have some holdover cases, but I do think it's, we need something between a felony and an underage. We really don't have anything but four months probation right now, so if there are other alternatives, that would be good. You know, we have so many felonies and so many sexual assaults right now that it would be nice to have some sort of community input because right now we don't have anything we can do for these people that are class two felonies and above, so.
I just wonder if, if we're going to invite them to come, which I do think we should do, that maybe we shouldn't waste that opportunity and maybe we should be inviting people from the court to come here and when they're here.
Oh, absolutely. I think, I think who we would invite would be the core committee that we would like to have involved in this.
So they'd do a presentation to the commission? We'd have the core committee people also here at that?
Yes.
Okay, so that'd be at a regular commission meeting?
Uh, it wouldn't have to be.
Okay.
Tuesday mornings wouldn't be a bad day for the court.
Would not?
No.
Okay.
Generally, I mean, circuit courts in the afternoon, Mondays would be horrible, obviously.
I think it's a great idea.
Well, I'll, if, if there's, we have a consensus, I, I'll call down and I'll see what they think, who, but I, I just feel like, I, when I talked to Molly Ramlow after our, you know, her and I talked about the fact that it probably should be that core group with the commissioners and, um, so it wouldn't have to be on a, a regular Tuesday morning. But I'll see what they, that group can come, when their time schedule will allow for them to come up and talk to us. And then get back through Stacy. And that's all I have.
Okay. I guess on the 25th, I attended the legislative forum. Commissioner Burley did a good job running that meeting. Lot of questions and, uh, really interesting. And on the 2nd, 1 o'clock, had a meeting with our architect before, um, evening meeting, it, from 6 to 8. You know, there was some, few people there. Uh, like Mike said, there's, probably should have been more. I just, uh, I think, uh, this next meeting would really be beneficial. And also, that's about all I have, but, uh, just, uh, a word, uh, we had a concern with the trees out by the gun club. There's no longer a tree left on that quarter, that they have cleared the whole quarter of trees, so. That's all I have. That's it. And look for a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.